All right, good morning, everyone. Before we get our council meeting started, we have a really important presentation for Mr. Edward Buckles and to Mr. Buckles Senior and to you, Mrs. Buckles. It's so nice to see you with us this morning. So this morning, the City Council has the honor of recognizing Edward Buckles Jr., New Orleans native and filmmaker responsible for the HBO original documentary Katrina Babies that made its premiere at the Tribeca Film Festival in New York City and was also screened right here during the New Orleans Film Festival at the Orpheum Theater. We want to welcome all of you this morning for being with us. And your film is absolutely tremendous. For those of us that have seen the film, we know just how impactful it really is. And really, the stories that have been told in your documentary, I absolutely agree with you in what I've seen and in your film, that this is part of the healing process that, for many, did not occur. And so that process of being able to tell your story is a way of healing the trauma from the storm. For those who have not had the opportunity to see the documentary, the Oscar-qualified Katrina Babies film is a stunning and emotional piece that provides an intimate look at the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina and its enduring impact on the children of this city. It does this so brilliantly and by shining a spotlight on the long-lasting and often overlooked impacts that loss, trauma, and displacement had upon our city's youth, notably our black children. It is a truly impactful piece, and I'm not surprised in the slightest that it took home Tribeca's first-ever Human Nature Award and also the Albert Maysles Award of Best New Documentary Director. I hope I pronounced the Maysles last name correct. Before I turn it over to you, Edward, to tell us a little bit more about the film and obviously the notoriety around it now, I do want to share the trailer for the film. And if we can play that right now, the viewing public online can see it.
We woke up and my mama was all over the place. Like, yo, we leaving. Like, yo, like, I'm not asking you, I'm telling you. Since the storm, it seems like everybody just moved on. In America, especially during disaster, black children are not even a thought. Have you ever, like, talked about this before?
No, I haven't.
Why are you there?
Oh, no, no, why not really? They don't really ask me.
Hurricane Katrina caused one of the biggest dispersments of black people in history. After losing so much, why wouldn't anyone ask if we were okay? Nobody ever asked the children how they were doing. So I am.
Katrina Babies, take one.
Friday, I was at school walking the hallways with my friends. By Monday, I was on top of fucking roof.
Everything you consider as part of who you are was reduced to a trash bag.
Am I gonna die? I don't know. I just was like, I'm not supposed to be here.
The New Orleans that we knew was gone. When I got back after Katrina, I naively thought that everything was gonna be normal again.
The feel of community in New Orleans is different now.
Your neighborhood was crucial to who you were. What we knew to be true is gone. Think about what that does to a community. It destabilizes it.
I feel like nobody should be that young going through shit like that.
They're at home and they don't feel safe. What does that do to our children? It wreaks havoc on their well-being.
Katrina is becoming a folk tale, and we're the storytellers.
Resilience is when you still find a way to have your head up and help yourself. Sometimes I feel like resilience is used as a tool because they want people to think, oh, no, everything is okay. These people are good, like, they're strong. Look at how much they've overcome. It's for me to say when I'm resilient. It's for me to say, what is resilient? It's not for you.
Being able to tell my Katrina story has been part of my healing process.
Even though we are resilient, we can never give back what was lost.
With that, Mr. Buckles, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Wow. I just want to say thank you. Thank everybody here. You know, it's a great honor to be recognized by my city. You know, when I first started this project, it was right around, I think, 2014 or something like that. And I was going to Dillard University. And one of my biggest concerns and a question that everybody asks, even like, you know, including my teachers, was, you know, how is this gonna reach, you know, everybody else outside of New Orleans? How can a film like this appeal to them? And what's interesting is that, you know, years later, it seems like that was the easy part, right? It seems like, you know, people from outside understanding it was, you know, not that hard, right? And but I gotta say that one of the biggest validations, you know, and like, I've been, you know, as you said, it's an Oscar contender. I've been recognized, you know, for different awards. I've been all across the world with this film. But one of the biggest, you know, I think, validations is to be recognized by New Orleans, you all and the people of the city. So I definitely appreciate that. I did, I did, you know, like, prepare some words that I'm gonna read just so that we can save time.
Hey, this is your time.
Absolutely. But, you know, in receiving this honor, I know that this cannot end here. I look forward to the opportunity to work with you all directly to direct, I guess, like, I want to directly work with you all so that we can come up with, you know, solutions for some of the same ideas and like, some of the same, you know, subjects that we cover in the film. The film wasn't arts, you know, for art's sake. It's impact. This is what I hope to be the vehicle that helps us work to address the issues of mental health, violence, and crime. Crime and violence, but not only crime and violence, but also the conditions that bring crime and violence into being. Quality education, progressive opportunities for young people, and all negative conditions that are plaguing our New Orleans youth today. My team and I, House of the Young, is working nonstop on plans to address all that I just listed because this film, Katrina Babies, it was just a small start to the conversation and the impact that needs to be put in place. And I am hoping that we, all of us can work on it together. So I appreciate this great honor and, you know, y'all will definitely be hearing from me again because we have a lot of things in place.
Mr. Buckles, Mrs. Buckles, what would you like to say about your son and this film?
Well, I thank God for him, and I'm very, very proud of him. I knew he was gonna do something, but I didn't know it was gonna be that major. And it really, I'm sorry, y'all, it really surprised me because when I went up to, when he brought me up to New York, he said, "My, this is my office." And I just didn't know that, you know, he was gonna do something that major. And I thank God for him, and I'm proud of him. And he always have been, like, pretty smart. He always have been pretty smart because I used to like go in his room because he'd be so quiet. And I used to go in his room, and I used to ask him, "What's wrong? What's wrong?" He said, "Mama, nothing ain't wrong, nothing ain't wrong." And one day, I just, I know, he never knew this, one day I was just searching and I looked and I seen him with this monologue. And I read it and I'm like, wow.
She was reading my journal.
And I was like, wow. So I'm just leave him alone and let him do his thing. And that's what I did.
I'm proud of him. Very, very proud of this film, the way it came out. It's still touching when I look at it. It's a very touching and emotional film and all. I want to be a part of this thing, too. I want to see, can I get something done in a way that would help our younger generation and youth also because we need, they need help. They really, really do. So I'm all on board with this thing also, and I hope all of you are on board with him, too.
And just like, one last thing, you know, it was the village that kind of like helped all of this come into being, you know. I was on the verge, like, in many different ways in my neighborhood, especially after Katrina, I was on the verge of taking the wrong direction. And, you know, it was my parents and, you know, finding like an outlet in the arts that literally saved my life and saved like a bunch of, you know, my other friends' lives. So, you know, the plans that we have in place, I just really think that it can, it can help a lot, for sure.
Yeah. So I really appreciate what you said about trying to figure out, you know, the mental health aspect and particularly how we deal with trauma in our city because we are a traumatized community from whether it's Katrina, whether it's the violence that's happening in our streets every single day. So I've been doing a lot of research around community violence intervention programs. And I was reading, actually, it was night in the middle of the night because it keeps me up at night, you know, an article in Time Magazine from just a couple of years ago. And it was an editorial in Time Magazine about these types of intervention programs. And I just wanted to read a quick paragraph because it's very applicable to what you just said. It says, "We know that people living in communities with high levels of violence experience significant levels of trauma. When young men grow up seeing their fathers, uncles, and older brothers killed or jailed, that takes a psychological toll. In turn, that trauma impacts their ability to succeed in school, maintain a job, and navigate, navigate high-stress situations. The cycle builds over years and generations and leads to more violence. Community violence intervention programs connect people most impacted by violence with the mental health supports they need to begin to heal from complex trauma and help them develop skills to cope in stressful, sometimes life-or-death situations." And I think the issue that we've had in this city is that while we seem to have an understanding for that, we never have built a program in our city that has adequately addressed this issue. And so that is, that is my goal. Now, this isn't, this isn't something that is, you can throw a couple million dollars at a year. This is something that is likely a $30 to $50 million initiative to really ensure that we are reaching those who need the most resources. And it's about mental health, and it's about dealing with trauma, and how do we break that cycle?
Yeah.
And we have to sustain it. It can't just be like, well, we did it for a year, and now let's move on to something else. But I, so I really appreciate you saying that.
Thank you.
That, I mean, your film is so beautiful and brings up so many of these issues, but the fact that you're also here saying, like, can I help my city? Like, you're not, you're not like now off going to Hollywood. You know, I mean, it's like, I hope that you do, you know, become this huge filmmaker, and I think you're on the path to do that. But I just very much appreciate you saying that you are also here to help your city and your community.
Absolutely. Everybody, like, everybody's been asking me, you know, what's next? And I'm like, Katrina Babies, this is next. You know, the impact of Katrina Babies, everything that we bring up in the film, everything that you just said, we have to build the infrastructure now. You know, this is just a, it's a very small start to the impact that we wish. So, you know, I, again, I hope that we can all work together, you know. I think that we all know the roots to the issues, you know, and I think that it's just gonna take some empathy and, you know, some, people have to be willing to want to, you know, help the youth. And like, I think that it'll save our city, for real.
I agree. I'll start down the line. Councilmember Thomas, and we'll move down this direction.
Well, first of all, let me say how proud I am. You know, we come out the same cultural family.
Yeah.
You know, you were raised in the midst of people who expected you to do what you're doing right now, from Mom and Papa Buckles. When you were running around the theater with that little grin on your face, not listening to any of us, and we look up and we say, where's Edward? I didn't understand it then, but I think I understand it now. That was part of your creativity. When we would get frustrated, you know, about why weren't you more serious about acting and engineering and all of those things, I didn't understand it then, but what I understand now is that was part of your creativity. And what I know now is that you were still really paying attention. You know, with people who know New Orleans, Lisa, Alexis, the people who know New Orleans, they know our culture and our rituals are our therapy. That drum cadence and the music that you don't get, I'll say it like we say it here, nowhere is else but here.
Right.
That social and pleasure club, it's therapeutic. It's therapeutic to us. And because the one thing we've always had is our culture. Congratulations, man, for what you do, but you were prepared for this, too.
Yeah.
You know, everybody come out our camp is expected to succeed.
Right.
They're expected to do what you did because you were prepared for it. From lighting to sound engineering to acting to producing, you were prepared by the best and with the best. So there's no doubt that you'll do great things, not only because we expected, but because now you know you expected. And for folk who may not know, let me say, you know, what people don't know about young men and women like Edward is that while they were in their early teens and late adolescence, when the cultural community, the theater community came back, we put together performances with empty audiences where there were just three and four people while everybody was working on those productions. And it wasn't because we worried about who would come or how much money the theater or the production would make. It was because we knew we had budding stars and folk like you and that the creativity would also come up with a solution. So one of the solutions is continue supporting our culture.
And arts.
Understand our culture. It's therapeutic. It's, it's psychologic. It's comforting. Man, keep doing what you're doing. And I know Willie and Tori and all of your friends and Gwen and Will and Anthony and everybody who expects you to succeed know that you've already succeeded, but there's a whole lot more for you to do. Keep doing what you're doing, fam. We love you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to thank you for your work and for sharing your artistic talents and also for taking time out to talk about people, youth, children, that don't get to be often heard from following such as the tragedies that we had during Hurricane Katrina and in other instances, too. And those voices have to be heard more. You spoke from your experiences, but also I could see in the documentary a tremendous commitment to sharing the message with the entire nation that it turns out now that we need to think about the effects that these sort of disasters or activities have on our youth. Can't do that enough, to be very honest with you, because it's so easy to forget when you look at headlines and you see stories of neighborhoods that have been devastated or, you know, you see physical loss and you see financial loss. Sometimes you don't think about the effect that it has on those who are most easily impacted, and that's our youth. So your documentary, your work did a tremendous service to our community, and I just want to thank you for sharing your talents and encourage you to continue doing exactly as you're doing because I know that you're very committed. The voices of youth need to be heard more, they need to be understood, and they need to be sympathized with in terms of responding to tragedies in their communities. Too often in our community, we see tragedies involving youth, and we want to do something about it, and that's very important. But sometimes we forget to talk to the youth and maybe find out what's going on with them. You talked, and you talked to the nation and let them know that when there's a disaster such as this, they need to really continue to remember that there are youth who are impacted. So thank you for your recovery, but not only for your recovery, but for sharing your experiences with others. I appreciate your commitment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murrah.
Edward, Mr. and Mrs. Buckle, I really don't know where to start. I think sometimes when we talk about the problems facing our city, one of my mentors, very important person in my life, is a woman named Sabrina Mays. I know many of y'all know her. And oftentimes, she reminds me as we have these overall dialogues about the state of the city, state of crime, the state of disrepair, she always reminds me of this single line. She goes, "You have to remember that Katrina was a defining point for a whole generation of people, and you have Katrina Babies raising babies."
Right.
And we often forget that generational trauma has defined us as black people in America. And when you look at what happened in New Orleans during Katrina and what it did to a generation of people, not just the people who are older and more, who are past their formative years, but those who really, in their most formative years, experienced substantial trauma that upended and really redefined them as people. When we look, what, I wish everybody in New Orleans would watch your film because we have probably half the population of New Orleans moved here after Katrina.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, at the time, my mom was in when the levees broke with Spike Lee. And I remember how everybody in the nation saw it, and it really was a very political film. It was about the outrage of how we got to a point that after all this neglect, coronavirus, the levees breaking, but really, it was a snapshot of a moment. And that was the moment right after Katrina when we were all just like, why did this happen? When I, when I talk to people who have moved here and have so much impatience for why things are the way they are, they do not understand what it was like for those of us who lived through Katrina and had to limp and move forward after Katrina. They don't understand that if they moved here from Colorado or from, or from New York or from Houston, they didn't have a Katrina moment that basically wiped out and reset their city. And so they hold us to a standard of, well, this is another American city like everybody else. And it's like, you, it's not the same because we went through something that was so traumatic to older and particularly younger people, it just redefined who we were as people, and we're still struggling with that. And I say, I wish the people who moved here would see it because they don't understand. They don't understand why the city is in the state it's in. They don't understand why you have kids who don't have a care in the world for their lives, their livelihood, their future. And it's because many of them who have parents who suffered through that trauma don't understand that their parents had their entire childhood upended in some ways taken away, and they're now raising kids. So in a lot of ways, and I hope, I mean, whether or not Spike Lee's watching, I don't really care, but I mean, in a lot of ways, as someone who watched both films, I feel like as a New Orleanian, your film more appropriately captures Katrina and what it really was. I appreciated the other film because it, it was important for that moment. But if you want to know what Katrina did to our city, if you want to know what Katrina is doing to our city, your film's the only film that captures that. I mean, honestly, I'm also probably unpopular, so I wish Tremaine, the TV show, had never happened because I think all these different efforts from people who are not from here to define what Katrina did to us who live here were a disservice because none of them appropriately captured what it was like, and every one of them tried to give their version of what we went through. And your film truly captures what our community went through and what our community's going through, and it's just such an important, must-see film. I'm so glad it's won so many awards. I'm sure it will continue to win awards. I will tell you that the fact that you got such a glowing review from Robert Ebert, who was the most cantankerous, not-get-it reviewer of film in the universe, tells you that if you could get through to him and make him understand on some fundamental level what Katrina did to the city, man, anybody watching your film is not gonna walk away from it not touched by what New Orleans was and what New Orleans is. So thank you so much. Y'all should, I'm sure y'all are proud, y'all are proud of him. We're all proud of you and look forward to whatever you do next.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Harris.
Edward, and your family, thank you for being here today. I don't think that I can say more than what was already said. You know, the impacts, again, of generational trauma are significant, and you captured that moment. When I watched this film, I cried because it's just so poignant, and you can see exactly how the impact of that moment, of that disaster, has reverberated into what we're facing right now and what our young people are facing right now. What I hope you don't have to do is come back 10 years from now, five years from now, and talk about this moment right now that we're in, where we're facing an inflection point, where gun violence is so high, where young people are getting killed at such an alarming rate. I don't want you to have to document that and those impacts and that generational impact that we're gonna see again and again. What I do want to highlight is something that you said, that the arts are so important and so saving in a young person's life. And so we, as a city council, need to ensure that we support arts education and arts opportunities in this community. I know that there are some, but they're not highlighted as much and they're not available to everybody who needs them. And my final point is this, for the thousands of people who are watching this meeting right now, or will go back and watch it, I think what they need to do is understand where we are in New Orleans. And they can do that by watching your film. It should be required watching to every citizen of New Orleans who is living in the city right now and who don't understand what's happening in the city because it just puts a point on what is happening. And again, I just want to thank you for highlighting this by making people really, truly understand where we are as a city and how we need to go forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Geruso.
Good morning. I guess I'm gonna come at it from a slightly different angle, which is, my wife and I moved back to New Orleans in '04, and our house in Broadmoor flooded. And I remember thinking sort of two things. Number one is, I'm thankful I didn't have any kids yet because I really worry about how are you gonna raise them in this environment and what is everything gonna look like for them and all of the uncertainty that you don't have. And then number two, we had all the resources that we needed. I lived with my in-laws, everything was taken care for us. We moved back to the city in November, and yeah, it was tough because you couldn't go everywhere you wanted to, and the lights didn't work, and maybe saw National Guard in the middle of parks with their big guns, remember? And, but it wasn't, where am I gonna go to school? Where are my friends? Where's my next meal coming from? And I think that part of the story needs to be told as well. And I'm thankful for your artistry in being able to tell that. And I agree with everything Councilmember Harris has said and what you said to start with is, I know, and we're gonna talk about NOPD later today, and that is an important part of public safety, but it's also, as you said, the mental health portion of this. How are we looking at root causes? And I know this council has made a commitment in funding recreation, artwork, making sure that we have things for kids to do starting out, funding early childhood education as an important part of all of that. And my hope is, we're gonna bring the Mental Health Collaborative that I talked about in September back here in either late March or early April because I truly believe mental health is such an important piece and that we don't have enough available for everybody and people don't seek it the way that they ought to. And so I welcome every opportunity to work on you with that. I think our first steering committee meeting's gonna be in the first couple of weeks. And I, however we can work with kids, adults, those who are trauma-informed, we're gonna do and make it work out. So thank you for this, this piece of art that's gonna live for forever.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let me just read the bottom of the proclamation. The top is a little lengthy, but let me read the proclamation piece. At the request of City Council President Helena Moreno, be proclaimed by the City of New Orleans that the council celebrates New Orleans' own Edward Buckles Jr. and his poignant film Katrina Babies. Your talent, heart, leadership, and empathy bring an unwavering light to these powerful stories. Signed by all seven members of the New Orleans City Council. Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
And we'll come down to take a picture with you, okay?
Can I say one last thing? Real short, I swear.
None of you should.
Real short. Thank y'all for, like, all of those, you know, super powerful words. The New Yorker did an article on the film, and the topic, well, the title was, "How Many Generations of Katrina Babies Are There?" And something that you said made me think about that. And like, I think that the answer to that question is up to us. You know, I think that, you know, I was 13 when the storm happened. I wound up teaching high school for five years after, once I, you know, got older, and I realized that my students were dealing with some of the same things that I dealt with. So I think that, you know, to answer the question, how many generations of Katrina Babies are there? I think that, you know, we can answer that by, you know, putting everything that we just talked about in place. So thank y'all for honoring me. I really appreciate it. It means the world, and much love.
Thank you.
Thank you.